Good evening and welcome to the 2015 City of Grand Prairie Council Organizational Meeting. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with, well, a bit of an introduction. This is an annual piece of business that we do to set council's schedule of meetings for the year, as well as appointments to committees of council and external agencies, boards, and commissions. So we have four items of business and three of them are my recommendation. And so council members, I hope that you all recognize that you've contributed to these recommendations, that they didn't come out of thin air. But the first item is item 2.1, the Mayor's Recommendation for Appointments of Deputy Mayor. Sorry. Excuse me, that's correct. Appointments for Mayor's Recommendations of Deputy Mayor. Councilor, you'll have seen the agenda, the schedule. As in the past, if council members have a conflict, we do allow some trading, which has happened in past years, but the schedule is here for adoption. Counselor Rice.
I move that we approve the Mayor's Recommendations for Appointment of Deputy Mayor.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. The next item was the Mayor's Recommendations for Appointments to Standing Committees of Council. Just for the public's interest, I did do a survey of council to find their areas of interest and tried to balance workload, areas of interest, expertise, and also ensuring that every council member has an opportunity to experience as many different areas of the city operation as possible. And so, council, you'll see those results reflected on my recommendations for appointments to standing committees of council. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. I would move the council approve the Mayor's Recommendations for Appointments to Standing Committees of Council as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that recommendation? Counselor Rice.
I commend the Mayor. I think you did an awful lot of research and an awful lot of balancing, and I think the list looks exciting, and I commend you for the work you did.
Well, thanks, Counselor Rice. You can tell there's one council member that got most of the committees they wanted. [laughing] Thanks very much. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. I think I'm looking for one more. Thank you. That motion carries. The next is the Mayor's Recommendations for Appointments to Boards and Committees. This is for external boards and committees and some of the subcommittees of council. I have a motion for that set of recommendations. Counselor Logan.
Thank you. I would move the Mayor's Recommendation for Appointments to Boards and Committees.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of recommendations? Counselor Terrent.
Mayor Givens, just a question in regards to several of these committees have chairs, and it's not indicated which person is the chair of the committee. Is that the first person in the list? Is that?
Yes, it is, Counselor Terrent. That is usually, and in the past, it's been a practice to add an asterisk to them. So, yeah, it is first in the list.
Right, thank you.
Any other discussion or debate? Seeing, oh, Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Just to follow up to Counselor Terrent's question, I don't think that applies for the Airport Commission, though, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
On ones where there's another practice, for example, the, um...
It's started. It's started.
Well, there are a couple, like Arts Development Committee or Pursuit of Excellence Committee, which are internal City of Grand Prairie committees. In that case, the first person on the list is the chair. On ones like the Airport Commission, although there are a number of council members appointed as council member, and we just recently appointed a public member as the chair of that committee, so that's why that one isn't starred. Any other discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And the final is the schedule for standing committee meetings and council meetings. This reflects our regular committee schedule, as has been in practice for a couple of years now, as well as a Christmas break from December 16th to January 4th of 2016, a summer break from July 20th to August 7th of 2016, the Labor Day holiday, and then also time where council will be away at, or the majority of council at least, will be away at the FCM, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, June 3rd to 5th, and the AUMA Convention, October 5th to 7th, 2016. Can I see a motion to adopt the schedule as presented? Counselor McLean.
Oh, I wasn't making a motion. I just had a quick question. On the AUMA and FCM, I noticed over the years where we've kind of collided with committee means and that. Are we, now we're changing that, where that we, we're not going to have that? Is this what I'm getting from this?
Yeah, Counselor McLean, this has been our practice to block off those dates every year. I think especially this year, I noticed that there was one where there was a council meeting a couple of days before. Some council members may have been traveling a few days early before or for pre-conference sessions. Those might not be captured here.
Okay.
Any other? Counselor Thiessen. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I move that council approve the schedule of council and standing committee meetings as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the schedule? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that is all of our items of business for the council organizational meeting. We'll see everybody here, same time, same place, next year, and we'll call this meeting adjourned and we'll move into our regular city council meeting. I'll just change over everybody's agendas. And I would call to order the city council meeting for October 19th. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "O Canada." [music] [singing] O Canada, our home and native land. True base will bow in our sunsmile. We go because we see the rise, the true north strong and free. From high and wide, O Canada, we stand on God for healing. God, he for God, glorious and green. O Canada, we stand on God for him. O Canada, we stand on God for him. Thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. For those astute City of Grand Prairie council watchers, you'll notice that our seating arrangement is different around the table today, and so that gives me the special treat of hearing Counselor Thiessen in my left ear rather than in my right ear, and it was a noticeable difference. Thanks for that, Counselor Thiessen. We'll move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. I move the municipal city council meeting held October 15th, 2015, be adopted as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean.
Or 5th, I mean.
Of October 5th, thank you. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like they accurately captured what happened? Looks like it does, so I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That'll take us to the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda? Counselor Logan.
Thank you. I'd move the adoption of the agenda circulated.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that we have every two weeks. It's an opportunity for anyone in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter, as long as it isn't the subject of a public hearing, which occurs a little bit later on our agenda. So was there anybody that came tonight wanting to address council? I see a few folks in the audience. Were you looking to come forward and speak to council? If you... So that'll be, that's one of the subjects of the public hearing. So that's, actually, as soon as we get through the delegation, that's the next item up. So it looks as though we don't have anybody here to attend tonight. It may be that Canadians and Albertans and Grand Prairie residents are watching something else rather than watching the city council meeting. Hopefully, they're still at their polling station, putting in their votes, and then watching the results. So we'll close the delegation portion of our agenda and move into public hearings. The first is a public hearing for Bylaw C-1066, Southwest Area Structure Plan Amendment, and OP-07-02, Stone Ridge Outline Plan Amendment, and Bylaw C-1260-25, a Land Use Bylaw Amendment. I'll call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. This is a rezoning amendment, medium density residential to general commercial. The land use bylaw amendment has been submitted to the City of Grand Prairie. The proposed amendment would change the zoning from medium density residential to general commercial. This rezoning requires amendments to the Stone Ridge Outline Plan, Southwest Area and the Southwest Area Structure Plan, as well as a land use bylaw amendment. The Stone Ridge Outline Plan was adopted by council resolution, not by bylaw. Therefore, it'll be amended that way as well, and will be considered at the same time as the second and third readings of C-1066-09 and C-1260-25. The subject property is 1.07 hectares in size and is located in the Stone Ridge neighborhood at 67th Avenue and Stone Ridge Way. As you can see, the property to the north is a future commercial site. The property to the east is a park, and their single-family residential as well, to the east of the property. As this amendment reduces the multifamily in the neighborhood, administration considered the MDF policy that would require a minimum of 25% residential units per outline plan area. With the removal of this one multifamily site, there are still five multifamily sites in the neighborhood. The ratio is 67% multifamily to 37% single-family after the proposed amendment. This property falls within the boundary of the Southwest Area Structure Plan. The subject property is currently designated as multifamily residential. The proposed changes from multifamily to commercial is not expected to create adverse land use impacts on existing or future developments. The property also falls within the boundary of the Stone Ridge Outline Plan. The Outline, the Outline Plan provides a detailed framework of the future development within the plan boundary, including the layout of the roads, lanes, open spaces, and land use, and zoning. The subject property is currently designated as multifamily. Administration does not anticipate any land use compatibility issues arising between the commercial businesses and the single-family dwellings in the neighborhood. There is a park to the east and a storm pond to the south, which act as a buffer with the trail system between them. The land use bylaw amendment rezones the property from RM, medium density residential, to CG, general commercial. This rezoning would accommodate the development of commercial buildings up to a maximum of commercial or residential mixed-use buildings up to a maximum of four stories. The parcel has already been subdivided as originally planned and will require no further alteration. The only change is to the use of the property. As such, the proposed redesignation will not impact the street layout, the pedestrian connectivity, snow clearing, transit, or utility service provisions. The applicant is requesting amendments to the Southwest Area Structure Plan, the Stone Ridge Outline Plan, and the land use bylaw to rezone the subject property. Administration recommends that council give bylaw C-1066-09 second and third reading, amend the Stone Ridge Outline Plan by resolution, and give C-1260-25 second and third reading. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that introduction. Brief opportunity for council to ask any questions of administration at this point that we might have. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Just a couple of quick questions. Allison, you said general commercial, so what can be included? Please add to that to what they're hoping to put into this place of one hectare.
Thank you. The information from the applicant is that they're proposing a restaurant and rental commercial spaces. However, the list for general commercial is quite extensive. They could put gas bar, liquor store. I could read specifically.
Is there going to be, just when you said liquor store, isn't there going to be a liquor store right across from it, a co-op liquor store? And we're going to have a pub there as well, across from a high school? You're saying they could have another liquor store there? Just a question.
Ms. Downing is getting the list of, look forward to land uses. Lots of liquor stores.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Childcare facility, commercial business center, contractor, family fast food restaurant, financial building, office, major office, minor, retail store. And the indication from the applicant is that it will be a restaurant and commercial spaces. However, it is going to be zoned CG, and the opportunity for a liquor store potentially exists.
Just two more questions. I'm just hoping that there's an opportunity to council look at this, a development about a pub and liquor stores already going in the area. Do we need another liquor store across from the high school and how they feel about that? The other question I have besides a liquor store, you know, I'm not against all the other stuff, restaurants or whichever, is if you put the map back up, but the fencing between, we sell all kinds of infills of building four stories, and then residential is they're going to have houses behind it. It's quite beautiful if you're in your bedroom in the backyard. Is there going to be, what kind of fence you're going to have there? Just a nice little wooden fence to subdivide it, like, just, you know, south of it there? Because we've got some questions coming up lately about how fencing and how development has been done over the years. And want to know what rules right now, if we change this, because they're asking for a change, so council, eyes wide open, what can happen right now? Or can we add to those changes with a certain type of fence? So right on the southwest, what kind of fence is going to go there to divide homes? People are going to live.
Ms. Downing.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. The property to the, directly to the south is a storm pond in the outline plan, so I don't think, there will be fencing around the property, and I'm not positive on what type of fencing. But there is quite a distance between this commercial property and any single-family residential.
I just want to finish up. Thank you, Mayor Givens. Because I'll have something to pin on the motion at the moment. Quite a distance. I've seen some infills or projects where we had four-story buildings, and quite a distance was eight feet to the fence post. So I'd like to know what quite a distance is. I'd like to know the quite a distance is, because we've had some in our city where quite a distance is only eight feet.
So your question is, what are the minimum lot setbacks within that land use district?
Exactly. I'm going to own a house. I want to know if it's going to be up to four story.
Are you buying a house?
Never know.
Okay. Ms. Downing, do you have the minimum lot setbacks for that land use district?
And that's my final for that.
Go ahead. Let's just those.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. We're just looking it up. The rear yard setback is 7.6 meters.
7.6, 20 feet. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Downing. Any other questions for administration? We will have another opportunity for council to ask questions, but now is the opportunity for the public. So I would ask if there's, we have a little bit of a process that we do, and typically we ask first if there's anybody who's here to speak in favor of the application. Is there anybody that's here to speak in favor of the application? So I'll ask if there's anybody here to speak in opposition to the application or that has questions about the application. Either way, so now would be the time, if you want to ask questions of council or of administration about this, this is your opportunity to speak as residents in the area. And you know what? Although some of us look funny, we don't bite. You're more than welcome to, you're more than welcome to come up and ask questions, but we would ask you, we would ask you to come to the presenter's table, and we'll turn on the mic and you have to say your name. I know, I know. It is, it is, seems quite formal. I will turn that on for you. You have a seat, and just state your name so that a recording secretary can get that.
So my name's Danika, and we just purchased a house in Grand Banks. We just moved from Calgary this summer. And we are a little concerned about the commercial, just because we are very close to the entry of Grand Banks. And when we first bought in there, it was told that it was luxury living and that there was a number of architectural controls and stuff in the area. Now, we do like the proximity to things like the Starbucks and the bank and stuff that's across the street, but those are a little bit further on. And then, as you were mentioning, too, there is a pub opening down the street. There's a liquor store where the TD Bank is already. And so us as a family with small kids are not really looking in favor of having a gas bar or a liquor store that close, where people are tearing in and out all hours. So that's just my opinion. The other thing that my husband and I were talking about, too, is a very small community. There's not a lot of people in Grand Banks. There's a lot of lots that are still for sale, and there's a lot of houses that aren't sold yet. So I don't know. I guess we're the only voice right now for that.
Absolutely. Just a second, there may be, there may be some questions from council for you. And if you could, just share us your last name.
It's Rauch, R-A-U-C-H.
Thanks very much. I see Counselor McLean has a question for you.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. I'm glad you came, because a lot of times this is done with variances or changes before a lot of people live in the area. And I'm glad you're the face coming to the same. We do live there now, and there's more coming, because they asked for a lot of these changes before. There's too many that are moving in the area. Thank you.
So there was no questions? There was just a statement that you wanted to make?
Well, no.
Okay, okay. Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. I don't see anybody else that has any questions for you. Thanks very much for coming, sir. So I'll just ask one more time if there's anybody else that wanted to come forward and address council on this matter before we close the delegation portion of the public hearing. I don't see anybody else coming from the public. Is there any members of council that have any other questions for administration at this point? Counselor Terrent.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Question for administration, just in terms of those uses that you read, were those discretionary? Or were they permitted?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you, Counselor Terrent. Those were permitted uses.
Permitted uses. Sorry, refresh my memory. Was a gas station, was that discretionary or permitted?
Thank you, Mayor Givens. A gas bar is a permitted use in the CG district.
What types are discretionary?
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Automotive and equipment repair and sales, commercial business center, commercial recreational facility, commercial school, drinking establishment, minor, essential public service, equipment repair, and recycling depot, vehicle wash.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Terrent. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Not really a question, but I do have concerns about the possibilities of a gas bar moving in. It is fairly close to the River Valley.
Just, I'll just ask you to make sure that this is, like Jeopardy, phrased in the form of a question.
Fair enough. No questions, then.
Okay, thank you. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Givens. Is there a possibility that we could allow this to take place but put restrictions on the ones that are already allowed? Example, no liquor store?
To limit?
Limit the...
The uses?
Limit the uses in that particular area.
Ms. Downing?
If we approve it as CG, then it would have to follow the standards of this bylaw. However, we could come back with a different amendment to go direct control, which would have specific uses listed that could be approved for the site.
Thank you very much. Counselor Thiessen?
I have a question now. Thank you very much. Allison, just a question on the Stone Ridge development. How much of it has switched over the past couple of years since the Outline Plan was established through resolution? How much has switched over to commercial in that time since we established it as a residential area for luxury living?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you, Mayor Givens. I am only aware of one other parcel going from...
What was the size of that parcel?
Approximately the same size, about one hectare.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McLean.
Mayor Givens, just to put aside with Counselor Thiessen, wasn't that parcel directly to the north of this one?
Thank you, Mayor Givens. Correct, it was directly to the north of this one.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for administration? If not, from council, and I do have one. So if council wished to refer this back to administration to bring it forward, or to the applicant to bring it forward as a direct control district that would provide more clarity, what would be the recommended process? Would it be defeating what's here tonight? Or would it be referring back to administration? Or, yeah, the question is, which would be the best process in terms of ensuring that the applicant has the ability to make changes in a reasonable amount of time without overly delaying the project for administration?
I think according to ensure that we do the proper advertising and that the adjacent landowners are aware of changes that are made, and we go through the process correctly, the correct procedure would be to defeat it and resubmit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that'll, with that, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move on to business arising from the public hearing. And I'll recognize Counselor Rice.
I move second reading of Bylaw C-1066-09, an amendment to the Southwest Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. So we have a bunch of motions that are all interrelated, and so I would just ensure that council recognizes that it wouldn't make sense to approve the first of these motions if we weren't going to approve all the rest of them. So really, if there's some sense that we'll have a discussion debate, we should likely have it around this first motion for second reading, and then that way we can have a discussion around that, and we'll follow the action that comes out of that motion. Counselor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. I strongly encourage council to defeat this motion. I feel that this area of the community is, although I appreciate the commercial district that's already there, I think there's substantial commercial district, not enough residential. And with the integration of high schools in the area, there needs to be a better balance of housing with commercials. So I strongly encourage council to defeat this motion as presented. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Logan.
Thank you. I am on the exact opposite side of the fence. We've established an entire zoning system for our municipality. This use is a use that is permitted in that zoning. When someone comes forward and is planning a proposal that fits with all of that, it's a little late for us to throw up our hands and say, oh, gosh, let's try and play with this a little bit and play with the site and so on. These are people that have got an investment, a project that's acceptable under the terms of the thing, of the planning legislation, and I don't think it's quite right to start cherry picking winners and losers as council. You can have yours, you can't have yours. You're okay, you're not. The zoning either applies or doesn't.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Givens. I believe that this has come to make a change from the previous what it was. So by voting no is keeping it the way it is unless we make more changes and redirect administration. I don't see the emergent great need, the development to the north is being developed. This one isn't yet because the changes haven't been made. And we do have a weather comment called winter, which is 20, 30 below, and this is El Nino. So I don't see the dramatic, we have to step up to the plate and say yes, because the way the zoning is. What I did like to hear from it is, is, I didn't like hearing, was another liquor store. That should maybe wake councils up about our perimeters on liquor stores in this city. So anyways, that's all. I hope we vote for it.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you, Mayor Bill. I, too, will not be voting for this development to happen. A couple of reasons, actually. Some have already been stated. It is a residential area. We have established that as a medium lot residential area, medium density. But I have concerns considering that it is already encroaching not only into the neighborhood, but it's getting close to our environmental parts of that area. The River Valley, of course, the Stormwater Pond, and then further back. If we approve a commercial zoned area of this size, all we're going to do is push future developments back into the trees and cut more of that stuff down, not to mention with the permitted uses, one being a gas bar. Council's learning, and we learn every time we go to a conference about how we can have contaminated sites based on this. So it may be good for the people who are driving in to fill up their gas station with the big gas tanks underneath, but after 40 years, those tanks are obsolete, and next thing you know, we have a contaminated site. We can't develop over top of it. It's just a closed down, and it can migrate as well. So for all those reasons, I will not be supporting this.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Givens. I will not be supporting this way it's set up right now. I will not be supporting this way it's set up right now. I feel that if we do go ahead and it's defeated, then it will go back to direct control, which doesn't mean things can't happen out there, but we do have a little bit more strength and control of what does go in there. And that's the reason why I'm going to be not supporting this. Thank you.
Thanks councillor O'Toole. Any further discussion or debate? Councillor Tarrant?
Thank you Mayor Given. I will not be supporting the motion. I believe that I, I would like to see it go to a direct control district so we could have a little bit more, you know, say in, in what developments actually do occur there. Normally, I, I wouldn't support that. I, I think we have, you know, zoning for a region. However, in this particular instance, we have a community that, just, just the way that it's set up, you have a park right there that's sort of the center focal point and, with the community sort of surrounding the, the commercial development, I would want to make sure that there's only certain types of commercial development that would go in that area. And for that reason, I will be voting against this motion and subsequently, if it is defeated, would be supporting, having it go to a direct control district.
Thanks councillor Tarrant. Just one clarification, I, I believe if this, if this was defeated, then it would be up to the applicant to choose whether they wish to come forward with a direct control district or some other district or to leave it as a waste. Just for clarity, that, that isn't a decision that we can make on their behalf. Councillor Logan?
Well, he really took away the gist of what I was going to say. I, I just don't think it's proper procedure for us to go through immense documents at the various sizes that we go to from neighborhoods on down to individual plots, decide that here's something that fits under it, and oh no, we're going to get rid of that. And let's just make sure we get exactly what we want put on direct control. That's just not proper behavior from the municipal council. We set our own rules and basically, we're skirting them. This is a dangerous road to go down. If you didn't want it in the first place, you shouldn't have seen that zoning there in the first place.
Thanks councillor Logan. I don't see anybody else in the queue for discussion or debate, so I'll call for the vote on second reading. Please vote now. Thank you. That motion does not carry. And so there's no need to continue on with third reading, but we will need to move on with the other items which are listed in our agenda as C and D at minimum. So if somebody could make a motion framed in the council approved by resolution, we typically will frame our motions in the positive. So looking for motion on number C on this section, council approved by resolution the amendment to the Stone Ridge Outline Plan as presented in Appendix B. If I could have that motion. Councillor Redburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. I would move council approved by resolution the amendment to the Stone Ridge Outline Plan as presented in Appendix B.
Thanks very much. Thanks councillor Redburn. That's our practice that you, the mover of a motion can vote against the motion if they so choose, but they just cannot speak against it. So we may have had our discussion and debates on the entire issue and the last item, but is there anybody wishes further discussion or debate on this item? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. So we move on to item D, the second reading for land use bylaw amendment C-1260-25. Could I have a motion for that, second reading? Councillor McLean?
I move a second reading be given by law C-1260-25 being amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Again, an opportunity for any discussion or debate. Seeing none, then I'll call, oh councillor Rice, go ahead.
It was always my understanding that the reason we had this split up was it would give the, number one, the first reading tabled it as a public document and then that gave the public two weeks to respond to it. So I'm not sure where this came from to eliminate that public process period.
Sure. Well councillor Rice, sorry, we're still, we're still on the Stone Ridge area.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I flipped my.
Yeah, there's just a bunch of levels to this one.
Sorry.
Yeah, this is the, the land use bylaw amendment for this.
I'll withdraw my question.
Okay. Thanks councillor Rice. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry and so there was no need to continue on to third reading. I believe that handles all of our items of business for that public hearing, item 6.1, and would move on to our next public hearing, which is around our public hearing procedure. I will open, call over to this public hearing and look to administration for an introduction. Ms. Downing?
Thank you Mayor Given. Public hearing procedure. The purpose of the amendments being presented today is to streamline the bylaw adoption procedure when a public hearing is required under the Municipal Government Act. In August, the Community Growth Committee directed administration to bring these proposed amendments to city council for consideration. Under the current procedure, when an application is received, administration circulates the proposed amendments to internal and external departments. Once the bylaw is written, it comes to council for first reading, where council establishes the date, time, and location of the public hearing. Then the bylaw is advertised for two consecutive weeks. In the newspaper, adjacent landowners are notified and a sign is placed on the property for 17 days. Four weeks later, the amendments come back to council for second and third reading. The proposed procedure involves administration setting the date, time, and location of the public hearing as opposed to council. The advertising, notice to adjacent owners, and placing the sign on the property would be completed before the bylaw comes to council. So to clarify there, the same public engagement would occur under both routes. At this time, at the council meeting, the public hearing would be held and council would have the opportunity to give all three readings to the bylaw. So the purpose of the first reading is to introduce the bylaw to council. The act requires that all councillors must have had the opportunity to review the full text of the bylaw before it is given first reading. There is no debate on the merits at this stage. In addition, there is no legislation requiring, requirement in the Municipal Government Act to set, for council to set the date, time, and location of the public hearing. As these functions are purely formal procedures, administration sees no advantages to continuing doing these steps at a separate council meeting. So the benefits to the proposed procedure is that it streamlines the process. The current process may take a minimum of eight weeks and an average of four months. This amendment has the potential to reduce that time by as much as four weeks. It also reduces the staff time reviewing reports. There, there would be one report that'd be presented to council instead of the two reports. And there are numerous people within the organization that, the reports that come to council. There's also the possibility of, of one council meeting instead of two, which takes time at council meetings, et cetera. And it's a clearer process for citizens and applicants to follow. Citizens and stakeholders are often confused when they see the agenda item for the first reading. They may get the impression that council will be considering the merits at this stage. However, I will note the Mayor Given always does a great job explaining the process to everyone. This is a common approach in other municipalities, including Edmonton, Calgary, Erdry, St. Albert, and the County of Grand Prairie. And it's also important to understand that their opportunity to do readings at separate council meetings still exists. One example would be if new information is received at the public hearing, council could delay second or third reading or both, or extend the public hearing. The act has the following requirements. Every bylaw must have three distinct readings, and a bylaw must not have more than two readings at a council meeting unless councillors present unanimously agree to consider the third reading. The proposed improvements to the public hearing procedure are consistent with the requirements under the act. This amendment aligns with the focus area by proposing a common best practice approach to the procedure for passing bylaws. Administration recommends the council give bylaw C-1260-45 and bylaw C-962-T second and third reading.
Thanks very much, Ms. Downing. Councillor Rice?
So does that mean if you, if we adopt this, we'll still have to have basically four motions?
Ms. Downing?
Thank you. Yes, that's correct.
Councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given. So what I got from councillor Rice as well, it's be the process of four weeks, but we could still say no, have third reading, and maybe it speeds up two weeks, depending on the council's direction at the time.
Ms. Downing?
Thank you Mayor Given. Yes, that is correct. However, there'd be one report coming to council with that procedure.
Councillor Redburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. Allison, does that mean that notification will go out four weeks prior to the report coming?
I guess so.
Does the public have the same opportunity timeframe wise to respond and to come to the meeting?
Thank you Mayor Given. Yes, actually, when we do first reading, then we, we put a newspaper out the following Friday, so it really works out to about three weeks, which correlates with the 17 days that the sign is on the property. So those requirements would be met under both procedures and the public would have the same amount of notice and time.
Ms. Downing, can you clarify that for me? I guess I was unclear. You said that when the sign went up af- after first reading, so my understanding is the first, second, and third reading all could potentially happen in the same council meeting? And then a sign would go up on the property?
Thank you Mayor Given. Sorry for the, the sign doesn't have to happen after first reading, it's just the way we do it now. So when we advertise in the newspaper, the sign would go up at the same time ahead of first, second, or third reading.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I just wanted, so, so there still will be a minimum of how many weeks of advertising on the site for the public to see?
A minimum of three weeks.
Minimum of three weeks where.
Just no different things, sorry.
Then it is the same. Okay. That's good. And then I guess the other question I would have, I was just thinking about this, I was wondering if there are any, any possible advantages the current system offers. The only other one that I had, and I'm wondering if there's a similar opportunity in the new process, is that council is aware of these proposals in advance of them showing up for us to debate, discuss, and vote on. So if I'm understanding this correctly, council could potentially be faced with a land use by, proposed land use bylaw amendment or zoning that's coming to us for a public hearing. It could have a high degree of public interest, but it would be the first time that council would have been aware that that issue was coming forward. Is that right?
Thank you Mayor Given. One of the options we have is when the advertising goes out and all the information is put on the city's website, that that information is sent by email to all of the councillors as well.
Would that be a practice or would that be a procedure? Like is that something, is there a requirement to note that practice or that type of process in any of this documentation? Or is that something that administration could, could do through an administrative procedure? Ms. Downing?
Thank you. I, that would be done through administrative procedure.
Okay. That, that's the only other sort of advantage that I could see is that as a council member, you have a little bit of time in between to kind of think about things and see the maps because oftentimes in these applications, there can be an entire area structure plan, which has lots of technical documents, and there can be a lot of reading, so to face that all in one council meeting could be a lot. So that little bit of time in between could be helpful. Okay. Councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given. I'm very glad you brought that up because over the few years I've been on councillors, I've gone through a few of the open houses. And I think it's very important for council to be notified and not just reading the paper, but to have it that, you know, after, we're going to have a public consultation on this and we have the open house because I've gone to a few of them and I enjoyed it actually. Showed a lot with not just baths, but also reading. And it's very important, I think, for us to be notified so that we can, some of us if we want to do that.
Thanks councillor McLean. Councillor Logan?
I would assume that for issues that may be more complex or more, creating a stir in the community, we can always just simply table third reading and have it happen that way. So I see this, I, I really, I've lived with this system for four decades and it's really cumbersome and dumb. And, but putting this in gives us a way to get around it with the majority of those cases. So I really like this suggestion.
Thanks councillor Logan. So it sounds as though there may not be any more questions for administration? Are there any other questions for administration? If not, I will ask if there's anybody here who would like to speak in support of this proposed amendment. This is after all, a public hearing. And our couple of members of the public that were here left, one with the media that never showed up tonight. But so, but we do make sure that at every public hearing, there's an opportunity for any member of the public that wanted to come. But that's not going to be tonight, we're going to see any of them. One last opportunity, council, do you have questions for administration before we turn on to business arising? Okay. Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to business arising. We have two sets of bylaws that need amended, and so we'd start with second reading for bylaw C-1260-45. Could I have a motion for second reading for that? Councillor McLean?
Thank you Mayor Given. I move a second reading be given to bylaw C-1260-45 being amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that amendment as proposed? Councillor Redburn?
Mayor Given, I will, I would be supporting this motion. I think councillor Logan is right on. And I would also note that the industry and our customers are appreciating this change as well. And so I think if we're, since we're in the business of providing good service, I think it's another reason we should, should make the change.
Thanks councillor Redburn. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. I'll look for a third reading. Councillor McLean?
I believe I'll third reading be given.
Councillor McLean, just make sure your microphone's on.
Sorry Mayor Given. I move a third reading be given to bylaw C-1260-45.
Thanks very much councillor McLean. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And so we'd move on to the other bylaw that needs to be amended to facilitate this, and that's bylaw C-962-T. I have a motion for second reading of that amendment procedure bylaw. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you Mayor Given. Move second reading be given to bylaw C-92-T being the amendment to the procedural bylaw.
Okay. Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councillor O'Toole, third reading?
Thanks Mayor Given. I move third reading be given to bylaw C-92-T.
Thanks very much councillor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on third reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That handles all of our public hearing business. Thanks very much to our administration team, especially for the nice compliments. We move through unfinished business, which we had none, and into reports. Our first report is item 8.1, the City Council Strategic Priorities Report for October to December 2015. Is there somebody from administration, our city manager, that would like to do a brief introduction? Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Your Worship. As council knows that as part of council's strategic planning documents, every quarter, there's an update provided, and it's council's way of monitoring the strategic planning that they have started at the beginning of their council term. So this is the version for October to December, and it highlights council's priorities, their advocacy priorities, and then some specific items on the list. And it's, like I say, it's updated every, every three months.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the strategic priorities chart as presented? Councillor Redburn?
Thank you Mayor Given. I would move council approve the strategic priorities chart as presented for the term of October to December 2015.
Thanks very much councillor Redburn. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. That'll take item 8.2, an amendment to the MDP, to the Municipal Development Plan, to a map for the arterial road network. development plan, to a map for the arterial road network. Are we going to have a brief introduction from administration on this one as well? Ms. Downing?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The purpose of this amendment is initiated by administration to amend map five, the arterial road network of the municipal development plan. And the purpose of this amendment is to correct inconsistencies between the transportation network in the Grand Prairie Transportation Master Plan and the municipal development plan. And we have a correction to make in the recommendation. The date of the public hearing should be November 16th instead of November 2nd.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll look for business arising, motions. Counselor Rice?
I move first reading of bylaw C-1237G, an amendment to the Grand Prairie Municipal Development Plan.
Thanks very much. Motion for first reading. Of course, we don't have any discussion or debate. Call for the vote. That motion carries. But would it be nice if we just do this all at once? Counselor Rice?
I move that Monday, November 16th, at 6:30 p.m. in city council chambers, be established as a date, time, and location for the public hearings.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice, and thanks for that catch and change on the date. Any discussion as to date, time, and location as proposed? Again, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and we'll take us on into committee business. We'll start with item 9.1, the Arts Development Committee meeting from March 25th. And Counsel Terrent, I think that was your meeting.
Move the March 25th Arts Development Committee meeting minutes?
Thanks very much, Counsel Terrent. Open for discussion or debate. Counselor Rice?
Why are we having March minutes at this point?
Yeah, that's a really good question.
Absolutely. In discussing with the new culture and heritage manager, looking at the upcoming meetings, it was determined that our previous meeting minutes were never actually submitted and approved by council. And so it was determined by Legislative Services that we should correct that oversight.
Thanks very much, Counsel Terrent. Good question. Counselor Rice? Counsel Terrent, do you remember anything that happened back in March? This is a while ago now.
Well, yeah, at this meeting, there was a number of our festival and individual arts funding grants that were given out, and you could see the list provided there.
Thanks very much, Counsel Terrent. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. We move on to 9.2, the Community Growth Committee meeting from Tuesday, yeah, October 6th. Counselor O'Toole?
Yeah, we're right on the spot there. I move the council receive the minutes for the Community Growth Committee held Tuesday, October 6, 2015, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries.
Just to speak on that... We did have an information on tandem parking in the city of Grand Prairie, and that information was filed as a report that we will take and consider. And also, we had a development permit issued with some... With the need to have some variances, and that was for the college park area. We had one individual from the city resident in the area spoke in favor of this, and also the owners also spoke on the design and the reasoning why there was need for variances.
Thanks very much, Counsel O'Toole. So we'll call for the vote to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. Motion carries. We move on to Community Living Committee from October 6th. Sure, Counsel Rice?
Under correspondence, that doesn't have to come to council. That was defeated at the committee. But is that not a council decision, or is that just a correspondence? 2.1, 2.1.
Oh, sure, the committee chose to table the discussion, not to defeat it. So it hasn't been passed, just tabled.
Okay.
Thanks, Counsel Rice. Thanks for making sure that everybody's on their toes. We'll move on to Community Living Committee. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 6, 2015, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counseler?
Thank you, Mayor Given. We have two motions, and basically both motions are to refer something to budget. I think committees wanted everything on the table at budget, so that we can make the decisions. We're not debating the merits particularly of the amounts, et cetera. That will be determined at budget. The first one is, I would move council refer the request by the Grand Prairie District Catholic Schools for a financial contribution in the amount of $2 million toward a performing arts theater at their proposed high school in Arbor Hills to the fall budget deliberations.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Open for discussion and debate. Of course, this is just a motion of referral. It's not about debating the merits. It's just about sending it on to budget, where the merits of the request will be debated. Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council refer the amount of $1,145,000 in additional funding for the community knowledge campus, CKC turf and field grandstand and lights to the fall budget deliberations. Basically, in updating the cost of the grandstand and the lights and the design fees and covered player benches comprise a expenditure of $3.25 million. We have $2.1 million in the budget. Therefore, the remaining $1.145, we're suggesting be referred to the budget for consideration.
Thanks very much, Counsel Radburn. Again, a motion of referral. Any discussion or debate, though, in case? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn, anything else you want to highlight?
Ah, yes. Thank you, Mayor Given. The other couple of things, we did some referral of South Beach Archives and museum information to budget, and were asked for information on the renovations to the community's social development offices. Admin actually bringing back a report to Community Living tomorrow. Similarly, with Grand Prairie Public School district, had a letter request to partner with the city in there next to Royal Oak School, and admin was asked to explore that a little bit more with the public school district, and I believe that is on the agenda tomorrow as well. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Counselor Radburn, it'll take us 9.4, the Community Safety Committee meeting, and Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of Community Safety Committee meeting held Tuesday, October 13, 2015, as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council deny the request to extend the period for subdivision endorsement for the subdivision approval, Z-12-0015 and Z-12-0016. And just to speak to it quickly?
Well, actually, I see our administration is looking to speak on this, so we'll look over to our Community Safety Director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few days ago, we have received a letter from the applicant stating that he no longer requires the time extension. The lot layout may be reconfigured in the future, and a new subdivision application will be presented in the near future. So the time extension is no longer required.
So is that the same as withdrawing this request? So there's no action then to take on this motion?
It's still being withdrawn, but I'd like to speak to it quickly. It's being withdrawn.
Sure.
This is one that council, I was going to say, keep your eyes open on, because we have to keep extending, extending, and extending for subdivisions, and there are subdivision changes or bylaws. So I would wish we wouldn't have been able to vote on this one, but it's been taken off.
So what will happen is the new subdivision application that would come forward would have to conform to any of the city's standards. Okay, Counselor McLean, if you want to continue on with...
The next one.
9.4.2?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council increase Engineering Service Contract, RFP-02-552-14, previously awarded to All North Consultants, and did for 2014, 124th Street upgrades in the amount of $143,090 excluding GST, to be increased by $23,363.25 for a new total contract price of $166,453.25 excluding GST.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Open for discussion or debate. Counselor Rice?
So as I understand this, they got the contract in 2014. They never finished the work before winter. Because they never finished the work before winter, the soil conditions deteriorated, so they need more money to finish it in 2015. Is that correct?
Not exactly so, Counselor Rice. Horacio could speak to it, but they also found other areas that made the work be more extensive than what was original, and it was more work added to the project from other areas.
That was part of it. I will concur with what I read that would support that, but certainly part of it was they never finished the work that they were contracted to do in 2014.
And so we'll get some clarity from the Community Safety Director, Mr. Galante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When core sampling and drilling was performed on the project, the consultants discovered some soils with different bearing capacity compared with the design parameters. So that triggered the use of geogrid and fabric in certain areas. For that reason, different procedure had to be used at that time with some delays, as well as fiber optic and some settlements around the hydrants. So combining all these issues, the project took longer than expected, and the scope of work as well was increased. And the requirement of the extra funding of about $23,000 is to reflect the change on the scope of work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galante. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Thank you. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council approve the transfer of additional funds from the following programs: $370,000 from the 2014 sidewalk rehabilitation program, $100,000 from the 2014 new sidewalk and pathways program, $210,000 from the 2013 sidewalk rehabilitation program, and $70,000 from the 100th Avenue Upgrades Program, MSI, for a total transfer of $750,000 to the pedestrian bridge replacement program.
And we'll stop on that, I think, and then we'd have a follow-up motion if that passes. So open for discussion and debate on this recommendation. As council can see, this is to fund the next motion. Any discussion or debate on this combination of funding from old projects? Counsel Rice?
Obviously, this is MSI money that we didn't spend all of it. I don't know why we didn't spend all of it, or why we would transfer it. Like, it's not like, well, there, we don't need any more new sidewalks or any sidewalks fixed up. This is surplus to that, so...
This is probably best directed to our corporatures.
Well, Mayor Given, we have five years after receiving the funding to utilize it for projects, so I thought that this was the best project to use it for this time.
So, Mr. Anderson, is it the case that these are projects that finished under budget, under the budgeted amount, and that's where the leftover funds are coming from?
Correct. When we do budgets, they're not absolute amounts until they go out for tender and are completed. So these are access to those projects.
Okay, thanks very much.
My question, yeah, my question remains, is if we had excess funds from sidewalk rehabilitation program, why wouldn't we do more sidewalks in 2015?
Director Galante?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have completed the planned sidewalk rehabilitation program for 2014 and 15, and because of good prices received, we have some surplus funding. Within the rules of the grants, and in this case, we have MSI and the federal gas tax grant as well, within the rules of those grants, we can transfer funding to similar projects. In this case, the pedestrian bridge is a qualified project, for that's the reason we're transferring the surplus funding to replace these two new bridges.
Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you, Mayor Bill. Horacio, what other projects would fall under that jurisdiction? Are we talking roads, or is this just sidewalks and pedestrian pathways?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the rules are calling for similar projects, and in this case, everything related to pedestrian projects, so sidewalks, curb and gutter, pedestrian bridges would qualify, not vehicular roads.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A question to Director Galante. I believe at committee, we were informed that we did tender one bridge, and you didn't get a response. We've kind of coupled two, and we got a response, and we think we're getting a little better pricing because we're doing two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. In December 2014, a bridge was tendered for the 2014-15 winter season. However, the bid received exceeded the budget available at that time, so we decided to bundle together these two bridges, and we got a much better price now.
Okay, thanks, Director Galante. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move the council award T-68-552-15 pedestrian bridge replacement program in the amount of $1,249,053.38 excluding GST to the Ruskin Construction Limited as a lowest bid meeting city specs. I'd like to speak to it quickly. These will be bringing two bridges in our park system, updating two old bridges, where our park system vehicles can maneuver as well to get from point A to point D or E or F quicker. And as well, they're going to use some of the older material from the bridges to replace into some other areas that aren't quite as utilized today as they're probably gaining utilization. So they are going to utilize some of the older bridges when they take them out.
Thanks very much, Counsel McLean. Any discussion or debate on this recommendation? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I'll call for the vote. Excuse me. Clear that one. And I will ask council to revote, get that before everybody had a chance to enter their vote. Please vote. There we go. Thank you. Okay, there's all nine. Thank you. My apologies, council. That motion carries. I believe that handles all of our committee business. Was there anything else to highlight in that set of minutes? Counsel McLean? Got it. Okay, thanks very much, Counsel McLean. We had no items of correspondence tonight. We had no delegations attending. We had no notices of motion. And so we move into council member reports. I apologize, council, I didn't ask in advance. So I'll look first to my left side. Are there any council members that have external reports from agencies, boards, or commissions? I'm seeing none. Look to my right side, and I see no reports from external agencies, boards, or commissions. So we'll do council member roundtable, and Counsel Clayton, as one of our few blue-clad members, we'll start with you. Counselor McLean is ready to jump, but his microphone is not on.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm so sorry. I did have some things to report, but I'll hand it over to legislation, Terry, and nothing to report. Thank you.
There you go. Counsel Clayton did that by enough time. It's possible that Counsel McLean is either a big Blue Jays fan or a big elections fan. I'm not sure which. We'll go then to Counsel Thiessen. Counsel Thiessen?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor Bill, but at this time, I too- Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor Bill, but at this time, I too am going to abstain from discussing the events in light of the election. But do go vote if you haven't yet.
I think seven forty, that's, okay, we'll move on, we'll move on. If, if we want to get out of here, let me move on to Counsel Rice next. Counsel Rice?
On Saturday evening, I was visiting friends whose property backs on to Hundred Street and eighty-fourth Avenue, and at five thirty, there was a motor vehicle accident which knocked out the traffic signals, signalization. I was extremely impressed. It was a very, very few minutes after the accident that the city crew showed up to begin fixing the lights, and was even more amazed when, within literally minutes of the tow trucks and the R C M P clearing the intersection, they had those traffic lights up and repaired and functioning again. There was about, I think, three sets of rotation of using it as a four-way stop, and it was back up and running, and they say it was a Saturday night at five thirty, so I think in view of that kind of timeframe, it was even more impressive, and I say kudos to them.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice, for those kudos. Counsel O'Toole?
Yeah. Thanks very much, Mayor Given, if you don't mind.
I wouldn't mind using Kevin McLean's time, and
Sure, no, by all means.
Can we get to vote on that?
Counsel Chris Thieson? Actually, I'm pretty proud of being in Grand Prairie this last couple of weeks. We had, I've attended a number of anniversaries. Oliver's Funeral Home celebrated one hundred years of being in the city. It's changed ownerships, but the name has still been there, and we went to a park on the south side of Grand Prairie, and they had a little bit of a get-together, and they, Oliver's Funeral Chapel purchased a bench for J.B. Oliver's homestead there. I also attended, attended the Dutch, Canadian-Dutch Liberation Hall on seventieth anniversary tulip planting ceremony. Just don't tell my wife I'm very good at planting flowers. We did plant tulip. There was three of us there.
What, a tulip?
No, no, we each got a tulip.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Counselor Radburn and Counselor Rory Terrent and McLean, four of us, three plus me, and we did a good job. And also, GP Rewind, GPR Industries, celebrated fifty years anniversary being in business, and it was a great event, lots of people from the past, and some new employees all participated, and thank you very much.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. Counsel Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Due to intense peer pressure from my colleagues, I'll just mention one quickly. Counsel did meet with Greg Clark, Alberta Party Leader. When we, when we have the opportunity to, to meet with any leaders of provincial parties or other, we take advantage of that, and I think it develops relationships, and we become more informed, so I thought it was a good meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel Evern. Counselor Terrent?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple really quickly to mention, on the eighth, I was able to attend an event put on by Crime Prevention, where they bring together all the youth agencies in the city, and sort of a roundtable, everybody discusses what, what they're doing, what their role is, and, you know, some of the highlights from the year. I encourage other council members, if you have a chance to go to one of these lunches, they do on a regular basis, it's a great wealth of information there. I, you know, as well as a couple other counselors, I attended the, the Dutch-Canadian planting of the, the tulip bulbs, and it was a, you know, special time for me. I got to bring my Dutch grandmother in from Beaver Lodge, and she was able to, you know, take part in the, in the ceremony, and at eighty-eight years old, was able to bend down and plant, plant a bulb, and that was really special to her, and, you know, I'm glad that the city was able to, to take part, and that we were awarded that special honor. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counsel Terrent. Counsel Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a couple quick things that weren't mentioned, that I was happy to attend with the mayor. I attended a brief meeting with Enbridge and Northern Gateway to talk about some of the future plans that they have under work, in the works, so that was a great update, and as well, attended the Community Foundation Nourish the North Gala with a couple other fellow counselors. Counselor McLean was there, as well as Counsel Terrent. It was a great revamp of a Pascal that they had had, and I haven't heard any numbers, but it was very well attended, so I wanted to congratulate that organization for running a great new event in the community. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counsel Clayton. Counselor Logan?
Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counsel Logan. Well, I appreciate the short amount of time that council members have made. That's probably record time, and it does leave me lots of time to cover the hundred and fifty events that I've attended over the last couple of weeks, and so we better get started. Counsel McLean, your face is great. No, I will, will pass. There is one, though, that I'd like to, to highlight. I had an opportunity to meet with Archbishop Pettipah. It was a great opportunity to discuss some of the common interests, and it was interesting to hear some of the challenges that he's had in managing a system that spans a very large region, and some of the changes that have happened in his area of supervision, I guess, if that's the right term, over time. There is actually a lot of similarities between the urban and rural challenges we see in municipalities, and so it was interesting to meet with him, and it was my first opportunity, and I really appreciated the, the audience with him. Other than that, I have no other business, so we'll call our meeting adjourned.